We'd like to start this off. Dr. Stephen Parker is our budget chair and a few words from him before we get going.
Yes, as budget chair, we have been meeting virtually for the last few months trying to go through this budget. What we would normally do at the public meeting, we would break it apart and each of the committee members, which this year is myself, Arthur Robinson and Ray Keener would take part in this presentation. But there's several things this year that make that difficult. One, the format doesn't allow for it as well. But second of all, normally all of our numbers are set and fixed. The state has given us a number for next year that we know they're going to keep. We don't have that this year. There's a lot more unknowns in the budget. We have a number from the state, but due to the pandemic, we don't feel that the state budget will allow them to support that necessarily. But because of all those uncertainties in the budget, I've asked Mr. Pulaski and Mr. Federer to handle this entire presentation tonight. So I will turn it over back to them.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Parker. And Dr. Parker just talked about probably the most important thing about this budget. And I'm just going to throw these up there. We are, to say unprecedented times is just passe at this point. We are facing a mountain and we have a skateboard to get up it. And it is, it is just monumental undertaking right now as to what we're planning for related to the finances of the district. For those that have been watching, we've already talked to you about S2 and the plan for reductions in state aid that will total, I'll go through that again tonight, but it will total about $9 million over the next four or five years. That might pale in comparison to what we're facing after the COVID-19. Financial mess is over. So I'm going to talk to you about something that is very odd for us as we go through our budget. Normally, the way we budget, you heard from Dr. Parker, they give us a number. We build a budget based upon the amount of money we have. Well, if you can think of for a second, having a steady budget every year and then find out that one year, you won't know how to plan, you won't have a clue how much money you're going to get, and you don't even know how much things are going to cost. And yet you still had to build your budget. That is our world right now. And I want to go through these so you understand them. In February, Governor had a state aid address, a budget address to the state. And at that time, that we learned that our budget was being reduced by $1.936 million. We have, he is now going to be in the position due to all of the financial trauma of the state and the country and the world to probably have to revise those numbers. We do not know if he will revise those numbers. Maybe he'll give us more money, but we're not planning on that. The most important thing I can tell you today is we don't know. We have financial uncertainty and we still have to adopt budget tonight. The second part that we don't know about is there's a new healthcare bill on the horizon. We're hopeful that this healthcare bill will be wonderful for our staff and wonderful for the district. But we just don't know. So that's another piece of information that will happen after we adopt this budget. Some things we do know, but we don't know the extent are the revenue losses from summer institute, community education, and we rent our facilities. We expect them all to be down. We just don't know how much down. But not having summer camp doesn't help. And that's a financial hit to the district. We expect less in all three of these. Next, we have what we have no idea what it will be or the cost. COVID-19 supplies, potential losses there. Maybe not a loss, but expenditures that we had not originally budgeted. And we don't know how to budget for it exactly. Do we have to buy masks? How many bottles of Purell would you need to Purell an entire 10,000 people a day, three or four times a day? We don't know the answers. We don't even know the questions because they haven't made that clear yet. And we might not know till long after this budget season is over. Our next piece are thinking about reentry. What will the staffing costs be? Will there be a need to increase staffing to manage all that? We just don't know. Next, we have something with our food service. As of right now, um, one second. As of right now, we're not making money on food. Not that we want to necessarily make money, but we certainly don't want to lose money as we're doing all this work to feed as many families as we can. We're losing money on a daily basis. What I will announce right now, all listening, if your family needs food, if you'd like to be part of our food service program and receive free food, please contact the school. We'll provide it for you. Free of charge. We just need to know that you're interested. David?
For that contact, if you could please contact Miriam Arnold at Central Office. She would be the one that arranges all of the food service throughout the district at this time. Miriam Arnold at the district main office or Michelle Armstrong at Chartwells.
We'd love to help our families, so please reach out. We also expect there'll be a loss of revenue from pay to participate. Now, I don't think any of us like pay to participate, but it is part of our budget. And at this point, not knowing what's going to happen with various sports, we don't know how that will work. Finally, good news, we hope, but we have no idea what it will be. And those are stimulus funds. There, the federal government did put out a stimulus package. The governor announced today that there was about $310 million that will be distributed to the schools. $310 million is a lot of money. But it's not a lot, not that much money when you consider 600 school districts and over a million students. So we hope to see money that works for this. We really do. Just don't know what to expect. So it's another unknown. These unknown financials tie directly into timelines, which we have no control over. When will the stimulus funds come? Will we qualify? State aid address, what we know is August 25th. Will we get information prior to that? Will we have everything solidified by August 25th? We open school in September. So it's very tricky. The healthcare bill, we don't know when it's going to be adopted, if it's going to be adopted. Reentry requirements and our summer programs and availability, like I shared before, they're just unknowns at this point. Before I get into the crux of the budget, these are all new components that we absolutely have to consider. Very hard decisions have to be made. District has to take care of its community. So we'll be working through that over the next few months as well. But tonight, we're adopting a budget with the state aid figures provided, with what we already know, knowing there's so much more that we don't. But this is the task we've been given and we are required by state law to pass this, to pass a budget before, I believe it's the 11th of May. Tonight is our night. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about what a deficit model budgeting is. And you know, this is what we're listening, this is the S2 world we're living in. A deficit model means that you are guaranteed to start every year with less than you had equivalent the year before. Now, you might have more money, but not enough money to cover your new costs. It's a deficit model. Our, that's every year, even if we're in a normal year, but this year, we already know the state aid figures took away at least $1.936 million. And that's already after working through a deficit model where we're always figuring out how we can cut. You cannot sustain while we're figuring out how you can cut. Eventually, it catches up. But when you take more money away in that model, it catches up a lot quicker. This healthcare waiver, we used to have a million dollar access to money. That was removed this year also. This year, we are fortunate. We have about $640,000 in bank to cap. It's money we didn't spend in prior years. We can use that going into the 2021 school year. But after that, that money is gone. It will have no access to it again. Which means in the following year, you're back to figuring out already, how am I going to find the $640,000 I just spent? One of the real tough ones for us was a law passed about, hmm, about 10 years ago called the 2% cap, meaning we cannot raise money above 2% of the tax levy. For us, it comes out to 2 million and change a year. The problem is, is we'll show you, we need more than that each year just to cover the basic costs of what we're doing today. And we already know, back to the deficit model, we're going to have less. Minus 2 million, minus whatever else is going to be taken from the things I shared before. This system was put in place, if you remember the recession, that's when this came about. Well, I don't know what's going to happen now on what looks like it could become a second recession. So it's a bizarre dynamic. And in this particular town, it gets more bizarre because the town has increased its value by $265 million over the last three years. Which means if we were able to raise your taxes, even by four and a half percent this year, you'd all still see a tax decrease in your property taxes. But we can't. By law, we are not allowed. So we're going to do the best we can with what we have and again, not knowing what we really have. That's kind of where we are going right now. So our basic budget with all the money we spend, our tax levy, that's how much we collect from you and from businesses is 114 and change. Then we get other monies in other places and that state aid number is the big deal, $21 million, the fourth bullet. But that money has been drunk and it may shrink again. You don't know. Other numbers, the other number that matters to us is the big number, all the numbers matter, but another big number is our debt service. I consider debt service the best way to understand it is if you have a credit card that you don't pay off every month, you have a minimum charge or you have a payment plan to get it all paid off. That's the debt service from opening buildings, borrowing money and all of those things that a school district does. Remember, for the school district to borrow money, we, well, those were all done through referendums years and years and years ago. And that's where we are. At the end of the day, that zero is a must to submit a budget. It must be a zero budget of how much you're going to spend, which is how much revenue you're going to take in. Unlike a company, they could do this differently. We cannot. We have to be at zero every year. So if you look at our state aid figures, if we start at the top, you see we've been hovering in that $23 million range. Then in 2018, 19, during the first round of S2, we received a million two. It was wonderful. We just got money. And they were saying, just kidding, they took it away. And now look at the plan all the way to 2023, 24. Every year, reduction, reduction, reduction. And I'll tell you what that looks like. Basically, right now, 80% of this district is funded by the local taxes. The other 20% comes from, as the sheet I just showed you, state aid, other sources. Look what happens by 23, 24. The state has determined that South Brunswick doesn't pay enough in taxes. I would imagine there's not one of you watching or on the board that agrees with that statement. But the state has made the determination that your taxes are too low. You need to pay their plan, cut state aid and make you fund it. Problem? You can't get any more than 2%. So even if you all said, Scott, we want to give you more money, you can't for your taxes. Not legally. So you know, when all this is said and done, you'll be funding more and more of the school district and state aid will be less and less and less each year. As of right now, one of our board members, Ms. Rogers, will be leading the charge, as she was right before we went down with the pandemic, related to how we can get your help, your support and get the word out that this needs to change. We need to get into the states' thinking. That's why this is happening and what else could be done. Because this is going to be untenable, which I'll show you as we continue. So again, a quick slide. This is how we, all red, right? All of our costs are going down. The, the top number is the total number of all these numbers, total budgetary comparative pupil. We're dropping. It's just, we're not able to continue funding where we need to be. So we used to spend 14.6. Next year, we'll be spending 13.9. And the year after that, it will go lower and lower. That's coming out of main categories, our operations and maintenance. Why? That's not fun and shiny. If we don't maintain our buildings, we don't maintain our buses. If we don't maintain things, just think of your own homes for a period of time. But there's a point where you can't anymore. We're going to reach that much quicker than we ever could have imagined. Other areas taking a big hit are administrative costs. We have no choice but to reduce in these areas. Classroom instructional cost takes a hit because all these other things add up. So we're going to keep working through this, but with the model that's been presented to us, these numbers are going to continuously drop year after year. So here's the best way I can explain this. This is what the government has provided to us, what happens to our state aid. And what I want to show you, if you look at the column, estimated reduction in FY '20 state aid and go down to where the number, $1,770,394. That is what they told us last year, we would be losing in state aid. And they also told us, over the course of all these years, we were going to be losing $8.8 million. But they decided, no, you weren't, we weren't taking enough from South Brunswick. So instead, we're going to take an extra 160,000 more from you. Total number, not 8.8 million, but 9, $9 million we're losing in monies to spend on your children's education. We hope this will change, but as of right now, we are operating under this guide. So this means, and this is an important point, I want to make sure I'm clear about this. It looks, when you look at how much we're going to spend in the operating budget, we are increasing by one point, almost $1.2 million. So it's hard to say, well, that's not less, that's more. Yes, $1.2 million is more. However, we have to cover all of the new expenses for the following year. To show you what that looks like. If we look down this document and the yellow striked line, at the very bottom, you'll see $1,350,943. That's how much we're short if we do what we're doing this year, next year. It's not that we're getting 2 million more. We need a lot more than that. And the state is taking money every year. If you slide over to the next column, 21, 22, where they're going to take another 2 million on top of the 1.9 million they just took. That year, we're going to be 3.4 million short of what we need. The next year, taking another 2 million, we're going to be 4.8 million short. And in that 23, 24 year, we're going to be over $6 million short. Totalling just shy of $16 million in money that we need to operate the district. I'm going to talk a little bit about the impact of that, but that's what we're facing. This is all, I'm going to reiterate, before COVID-19 implications. This was the plan the state thought was a good idea for South Brunswick School District before. So we don't know what to expect. And you can hear in my voice the frustration of this alone, let alone being forced to put a budget forth to our community with almost guarantees it will not look like it looks now. Not a fair situation to have to put you in. And I do apologize on behalf of the board and the district. But it is the law and it is what we are doing. And we will do it as best we can with as little impact to learning as possible. Here's a news for you. You should like this news. It's good news. With $200,000 assessed home, you will see almost a $50 decrease in your property taxes. And you can see each $100,000 of assessed value comes out to roughly a $24 decrease in taxes. Where's all the money? The school. We don't get any of these decreases. We don't get anything out of this. And it's not the township doing it. I want to be clear about that. The township is not responsible for any of this. So it's yell at the township because of these changes. This is the State Department of Education and the governor. They're the ones who own these decisions, the legislation, not the local board, not the mayor, it's not the township. But this is what it is. At least the good news out of this, you'll have a little bit of a savings depending on how much your house is assessed at. Figure $24 per 100,000 of a decrease in your taxes next. We're glad that you get the decrease. Don't get us wrong. It's a beautiful thing. But I think if we polled the entire community, they would gladly give us that $24 per 100,000 to not be in the situation we're looking at. But it isn't my choice to make for you. And it's not your chase to make, your choice to make either. But it's not news we're happy, it's not news we're happy about, but this at least one part, an extra, an extra few dollars in everybody's account is always a good thing. To stay on this point, South Brunswick is the second lowest, best tax rate in the county. Meaning everybody has the worst tax rate except for Cranberry. Why Cranberry? Because Cranberry is a schmidgen of the size of South Brunswick and it probably has the same amount of rate. It has enough warehouses in Cranberry, so they do a great job with their taxes. But South Brunswick is second best in the county and managing its taxes for its community. Right now, that's kind of hurting. They're saying that, that's not good. Don't do that anymore. Take more money from your taxpayers. Oh, but wait a minute, you can't take more money from your taxpayers. And that is our conundrum. They're telling us to take more money and then they're saying, but you can't. Not our rules, but we're trying to work through them. So what do we do each year to manage the budget? Improving upon our revenue generating programs. Well, I could cross that one out now. We're not going to be able to improve upon our revenues from this year. We review every budget line for accuracy. We're assessing everything, our enrollment. And that was a help, very big help this year. Our enrollment in the elementary school has gone down again, so we were able to reduce positions there. That helped us with the budget. We don't like to reduce positions, but that's what happens when enrollment's down. We have an extra almost half a million dollars from the Alyssa's Law Grant. Good job, David. Thank you. Improved our processes to get more extraordinary aid. Again, it's another unknown number though. We budgeted at $1 million. We hope to get more. We just hope really not to get less. We also always look at our vendor relationships. But a huge issue right now is with contractors. They're, they're suffering too. Our bus contractors are, they're in struggle mode. They're suffering. Right now, David, our business administrator is working with other business administrators around the county and around the state, trying to figure out a way to keep them afloat, provide them with resources and finances so that those bus companies can continue to serve us. We had negotiated a great deal with them. We hope that's still able to be put in place for next year. But it's possible that our bus courses could go up significantly for next year. Another unknown item. So again, this is what we do. It's a tremendous amount of work. It's a large undertaking. All of our building principals and assistant principals and supervisors, everyone is looking and directors and assistants, everyone is looking how we can find the best way to manage the money. It's a, it's a three, four month process. So here's the impact that we're looking at. Our short-term impact for next year is really just tightening our belts. We had the good enrollment I told you about the elementary. We increased a few fees that you'll be hearing about. What was the summer institute fees? Try and get, go in line with other locals. And we have to increase the bus fee for the morning middle school program. We just can't afford it. So we have to increase those fees or we have to eliminate the programs. We're not looking at starting any new programs. We have to look what we can continue. We look at what resources we can do without. And we look at how we could do the strategic plan with all this impact. So it's just, it's tremendous. What we're dealing with right now in the budget. As we go through this, looking at two and three years out is where it starts to get a little bit scary. As I said, over two and three years, we need about $10 million more than we have. So that, that, and this is sad to write, and I've written it before. We're looking at massive staff reductions, program shutdowns, elimination of services, just a whole bunch of bad. And right now, again, I reiterate, the state of New Jersey feels this was the right move to make with how it budgets its $40 billion budget, was to do this to our district and about 100 other districts as well in the same boat as us. Ultimately, if this continues, we cannot contain it. We cannot provide the education that the law says we must. It will be sustainable. And as of right now, we'll be picking up the torch again on this, throwing the spaghetti against the wall, so to speak, seeing what we can get done so that we can get out of this financial crisis that we are in. And again, I know I'm extremely repetitive this evening. This is all pre-COVID-19 impact and implications. And all of those unknowns could make all I've shared potentially worse than what we're already planning for. So the way to avoid this, we join, support our students with another 100 school districts. We're working with our township and seeing what possibilities. But again, right now, with this, this is a big problem. I mean, money's going to be tight everywhere. It's, it's not a thing that you just throw around to people. We're going to, we had, I was scheduled to meet with the commissioner on March 17th. We've been scheduled to testify, canceled, all canceled right now. So we don't know where all those things are. Andrew Zwickler, our assemblyman, has been absolutely awesome. He's a voice for us in the assembly. He understands the issues extremely well. He shares with us when he hears news that might help us and he advocates for the district. Continue our lobbying, use the press. They're going to have to understand our problem. Someone's going to have to help. And it isn't us holding a tin can outside our doors. This is, this is serious. Again, why we will do it well, as well as you can do it, it's serious. This is another part you have to know now. I just want to share this with you. It is very possible, if nothing changes, we have to go to what's called the second question in November, which is basically saying, listen, we need more funding. The only way we can do that legally is to ask for it and for it to be voted on. If it is voted upon and approved, those monies would become available to the district. The only legal way to manage this is through what's called a second question. The only next step we would have to do is move the entire election process back to April and go through a normal budget scenario back 10 years ago. We don't know the best way yet, but we know we need to modify. It's not just going to be Scott and the superintendent and the board members, David. This is not that. This is every single one of us that lives in this community. Because whether you have kids in the district or not, what happens to the property value in this town if the schools start to go down? I would not want me selling my house in a downward spin. We need everybody to join and jump in. And again, we have partners in our township and we have partners in the assembly. And again, I know you'll be hearing more from Lisa. I know she's ramping to get out now and start. But when it's time and when it's appropriate, she'll be leading us in the charge and see how you can help us with this crisis. I end, just so you can see these again, as a reminder, this page is all after all of the other information I shared this evening. In addition to all I shared this evening. This is the challenges we face. We will be amazing at facing them. But there's some big challenges ahead and we need everybody on board. Thank you all for tuning in tonight. And I'll open up to the board for questions.
Scott, do you want me to stop the share or keep the presentation up?
We can keep it up in case I have to go back based upon a question.
Yes, I have a question, a comment.
Okay, Steve.
Really. One of the issues even with going to a second question is either you have to pay for a special election, which is extremely expensive, or you have to do it in the current November election. The problem with that is having it in November does not help the 2021 school year. That wouldn't apply until the following school year. But we don't know what the budget for the next school year is. What makes it very difficult to put a question on on the ballot when we're not sure what to ask for.
It's a, add it to the conundrum list, Dr. Parker.
Right.
I have a question, Mr. Federer. So looking at the reduction in the classroom, it says a reduction in number of it says a, uh, reduction in number of dollar amounts for people, right? Spending that we are spending, uh, in that slide, we are saying that.
Yes.
So my question is that we are not, uh, lowering our quality of educations, I guess. We are just maintaining it, right?
I'm going to be honest with you, Devin. It, you, you can't maintain in a deficit model that is compounded by $9 million in lost state aid. And further compounded by the pandemic's implications. We will absolutely, because of who we have working in this district, absolutely best to maintain everything we do. But the education will happen, but the choices will be less. There'll be less programs, there'll be less things. It just, there's nowhere else to go but having less.
Okay.
That is what you're facing. Not less quality, lesser options.
Less options, yep, yep.
Could be higher class sizes, lesser options. Freehold Regional School District is already moved to 32 minimum in their high schools for class size as a result of the same issues that we're facing.
Good, thank you.
Middle school sports, schools are looking to reduce kindergarten to half day. The implications are, are significant. I know, David, you wanted to jump in?
No, I just wanted to say if anybody has a question, if they could, at the bottom of the screen, uh, click the, uh, raise the hand. I see those and that makes it easy for me to get to you and, and unmute you if I have to.
And one more, uh, questions, uh, uh, that let's see if, uh, everything we, I know in this, we are all together and we are fighting for it. So let's see if state comes back around June, because I know they extended their, uh, budget till October. So let's say if in summer or September, they say come back and say, okay, we have more money. Do we have flexibility to, uh, change our budget or this is set in concrete?
No, we would just have the extra money and then we'd be able to spend it though. So we wouldn't have to come back to the board for, um, anything. We would just be able to, we'd have more money to spend. So yes, Evan, if you can get someone to give us more money in June.
Yeah, we, our entire South Brunswick is working on it. So let's, let's work on it. We are all waiting for Lisa to see, uh, give, give us a game plan.
Are there any other questions tonight? Um, David, why don't you unmute everybody because, um, Lisa, is that you?
Yeah, I couldn't unmute myself. I, I apologize.
That wasn't by accident, no, it was by accident.
I know, it was on purpose. Um, I think it's important, uh, Scott, that you reemphasize the, um, S2 issue. Um, I think it's a lot, a lot of people don't really understand that and the implications to the districts. So it's not just our district, there's 20, and correct me if I'm wrong, 26 or so districts that are going, getting hit while some of them, like for example, our neighbors in North Brunswick are getting about six or $7 million. So there's a, a, a percentage of districts. Correct?
It's a, it's actually 100 districts have been hit hard.
100, okay.
Um, and yeah, some of our neighbors have fared well in the S2 funding changes. Um, we don't fault those districts.
No.
North Brunswick received an extra six and a half million dollars, but we don't, good, good for them. We're not unhappy that they received that in any way. Um, unfortunately, the way the funding formulas works, um, they've decided that the funding formula suggests that we're wealthy enough to cover all these costs ourselves. The part that we can't seem to get someone to grasp in the legislation is you can't say out of one side of your mouth, you're too wealthy, your people need to pay more money. And out of the second side of your mouth, the other side, say, but you can't take any more of their money.
But I also.
It's not, I'm sorry.
No, no, no. I, I also want to say that while we have to look at cuts, whatever those cuts are, um, across the board in our district, that I think there's also a frustration on a lot of folks when they understand that, um, those, and we have no problem sending children to charter schools, but we aren't allowed, and correct me if I'm wrong, we're not allowed to cut funding to the charter schools, correct?
No, every year we increase funding to the charter schools and they're not subject to these cuts.
And the frustrating part is they don't have to be accountable for the money they spend.
Correct.
Nope.
Thank you.
So I know in North Brunswick, for example, we could be like, oh, they got so much money, but, um, they also spend about.
Five points.
Five points.
Seven, eight or nine times the amount of money on charter schools that we have to. And that's money they can't use to operate their school district.
Correct.
So everybody has their own problems. That's why we're not looking at other districts with, 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 with any, anything like that. We're just looking at ourselves. And we know money's tight everywhere.
Right.
That's the way it is, but to tell a district, you're going to take $9 million. Um, or not, again, 100 districts, like some worse than us. Old Bridge is, Old Bridge is in the bad shape, Freehold Regional is in very bad shape, Tom's River, Brick, lots of districts, Jackson are in very, very challenging shape and they don't have the offerings we have. And I don't know how we'll sustain them absent of us going at some point to votes and that would be our only avenue.
I think it's also important for people to understand, Scott, that by moving the vote to April, maybe you could just kind of reiterate what that does for the board. What, what change would happen?
So if, so, um, districts back in 2000, I think 11 or 12, were given the option to move their vote budget to, to stop the budget vote. If you remember, you were able to vote on the budget that the Board of Education presented. However, the rules changed that if you were willing to not go a 2% cap, then you can move to November. That became a rule, not a willingness. So now we are under the rule of a 2% cap and we go until November. The other thing that would change, if you move it back to April, everybody gets a vote on whether or not the budget could pass, but you can put any amount of money you want in the budget. The other part that changes is the school board elections also moved to April. So that would be a shift back off of the national elections. You would just be back to April and the only thing that would be happening on that day would be school board. So not sure that would be desired either.
But then we bear the cost of the election.
Yeah, you would bear the full cost of that election because the county clerk's office handles the November election, not the April election. So all costs associated with voting, all the booths, any, any cost at all are 100% of the cost of the sole district.
Thank you.
That was one of the incentives for moving to November was saving the cost of the election.
Yep.
And then also moving it to November, that created more public participation because generally during the April elections, there was low voter turnout. Moving to November, that made the election more robust.
That's correct, Arthur. It's, you get much better turnout in November.